All right, good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Pastor Larry Fuller of South Penn Church of Christ, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cora Robinson representing Girl Scouts Troop 538. Please stand.
Would you please bow with me? Heavenly Father, we come to you at this time, we are so grateful and thankful for your love for us. We're humbled, Heavenly Father, by the love that you have for us and the love you've shown for us and that you do do so each and every day. We're thankful, Heavenly Father, that we live in a great nation, we live in a great state, and we live in this great city that you've provided for us. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would be with those that have chosen to be servants of that and to serve under that city and to serve us as residents. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would be with them and bless them, bless their homes, and we pray, Heavenly Father, that the decisions and the things that are done here today would always be done and those decisions would be showing glory to your name. We're so thankful, Heavenly Father, for your son that you sent to this earth to die on that cross for our sins, and we pray, Heavenly Father, that each of us here would live our lives towards one another, towards each other, to show respect, to show honor to that sacrifice that was made for us. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would be throughout this assembly, and we pray, Heavenly Father, that you would watch over the steps of those that are traveling here and through, and we pray, Heavenly Father, to give them safe travels back to their destinations. I pray that you would forgive us, Heavenly Father, love us always, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Fuller and thank you Cora. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and I do have some presentations to make from the front, and that's where I will go. All right, why don't we start with our friends here for Arts and Humanities Month? I know there's quite a few of you, just come on up. It's even a lot more than came into my office, it's half the chamber. Yeah, we'll need Randy close. Hey, how are you? All right. Fantastic, all right. Well, we have a proclamation proclaiming Arts and Humanities Month, and we have strong representation here this morning from the Arts and Humanities community, and I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, and whereas since our earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished because of the creative spirit and vision of our residents. We rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and our understanding of the nation and world. The arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us, and whereas whether watching a thought-provoking documentary, discovering a compelling novel, enjoying a symphony, or appreciating public art that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, the arts add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city, and whereas cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities are critical to our city's growth and prosperity. To meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of all residents by providing equitable access to the arts and humanities, and whereas this month we pay tribute to the tremendous power of the arts and humanities to unite us and to expose us to new ideas. As we carry forward this proud tradition, let us celebrate the ways our city's rich heritage has socially and economically strengthened our state and inspired our lives. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 to be Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City and call upon all residents to celebrate the arts and humanities in our city and encourage greater participation by all residents in the arts and humanities in our neighborhoods, schools, and all areas across our city.
Well, thank you very much, that's well said, and for a few more words and a few more speakers, everyone up here is going to get a chance to speak. Randy Marks is going to kind of guide us. Randy, of course, is our city's arts and culture liaison, does a fantastic job, knows everybody up here, and is going to say a few words and maybe pass the mic to a couple of people. Here you go, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, all of you, for showing up this morning. We have a broad range of artists of different stripes, art administrators, scholars, others involved in the humanities. Thank you all for coming out this morning and showing the strength of the creative sector in Oklahoma City. We've seen over the last several years, many years, how the creative sector can help drive economic growth, but even more importantly than that, it leads to greater satisfaction, better quality of life for the citizens and residents of Oklahoma City. We're going to ask, I'm going to ask Caroline Lowery to speak first. Caroline is, well, Caroline, introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. I'm Caroline Lowery. I serve as the Executive Director for Oklahoma Humanities, and first I would like to thank the City Council and the mayor for proclaiming October Arts and Humanities Month across our great city. Together, the arts and the humanities comprehensively tell the story of our shared human experience. Disciplines such as history and literature open our eyes to new ideas, they inform our past and inspire our futures. Communities that invest in the arts and the humanities are consistently shown to have robust economies and high quality of life and civic engagement. This October, I encourage all of you to read a new book, visit one of our wonderful museum exhibits, simply consider a diverse perspective. Happy Arts and Humanities Month, y'all.
Thank you, Caroline, and now I want to introduce Leandre Latimore, who is the Public Art Project Manager in Arts and Cultural Affairs.
Hello, thank you. My name is Leandre Latimore. As you said, I'm the Public Art Project Manager here at OKC Arts, and I'm going to do the sort of corny thing and start off with a quote, okay? So there is a saying by Leonardo da Vinci that says, "Art is never finished, only abandoned." Now, that sounds a little dramatic, maybe he was just talking about the Mona Lisa painting, but I think it has some pretty strong significance here when we think about it as creators and artists, and when we visualize the impact that we have on people, we envision it as something that's everlasting, right? And as it's already been mentioned here, there are studies that show that when communities are surrounded by great art, that it's a higher likelihood of them to have a better quality of life, to live happier lives. So I think that we should all do our due diligence in investing in art, appreciating art, making sure we support art, arts education, especially art accessibility, and that we can all ensure that all of us have better, happy quality of lives.
All right, well, thank you all so much for coming out on a Tuesday morning to support Arts and Humanities, and let's hear it one more time for Arts and Humanities community. All right, you're free to go. And next we'll get up our fire department friends that are here this morning. All right. Well, October is also Fire Prevention Month, and obviously the only thing better than putting out a fire is never starting one to begin with, and that's what we're here, that's what we're here to talk about this morning. So I'd ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas in 2022, the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to more than 93,586 calls for emergency assistance, and whereas fire killed nine of our residents and injured eight others in 2022, and whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department was able to perform 16 lifesaving rescues, and whereas property loss in 2022 due to fire was in excess of $102 million, and whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department saved more than $1.3 billion in property during 2022, and whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department experienced the loss and devastation caused by fire, not only for the residents they serve, but also when their coworkers are injured or killed in the line of duty, and whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department considers fire prevention as critical as fire suppression, and whereas Oklahoma City Fire Department employees actively engage in year-round risk reduction programs with residents to raise awareness of fire safety and help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 to be Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City and encourage all citizens to learn about risk reduction and fire safety and to apply these practices at home, at work, and throughout our city.
All right, well, thank you. And Chief Kelly asked that Chief Bennett say a few words about fire prevention this morning.
Sir, first, thank you, Mayor Holt, City Manager Freeman, and the rest of the council for allowing us to come in and just observing Fire Prevention Month. We truly appreciate it. You know, this is just a small snapshot, I guess you could say, of the fire department. Everyone up here, with the exception of the fire chief, is a part of our Fire Prevention Division, and you know, of course, our operations section, they do things, you know, just from, I guess you could say, a reactionary standpoint. We always show up when our residents call 911, but the Fire Prevention Division, we look at things from a proactive standpoint, just to get in front of things and try to try to prevent them from happening. So that's kind of what Fire Prevention Month is all about. As a department, you know, our vision is building a premier fire department through risk reduction, innovative emergency response, and inclusiveness that exceeds the community's expectations. So we wouldn't be able to do those things. It's something that we're serious about, our vision. It's not just words, we truly live by that, we embody that, and we wouldn't be able to do that without the support of our residents and the rest of the city. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's show our gratitude. Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for what you do at the Fire Department today. It was an exciting week. We opened a new station down in southwest OKC, and we're so grateful for your service. Thank you again for coming out this morning. All right, now it's time for our Employee of the Month. Shamika Lee, come forward. Come on down. Occasionally, we have employees from sort of the public information and marketing area, and when we do, there's a very strong cheerleading section. All right, well, we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Shamika Lee has been a city employee for seven years and is the Action Center Supervisor in the Public Information and Marketing Department, and whereas Shamika Lee manages the Action Center, which is the city's central point of contact for residents to ask questions and submit non-emergency issues such as potholes, high grass and weeds, abandoned vehicles, and other neighborhood problems through calls, texts, emails, and online, and whereas Shamika Lee supervises four full-time representatives and ensures residents receive quality service, prompt solutions, or explanations to complex problems at a volume of over 100,000 requests for service a year, and whereas Shamika Lee responds to technical and sensitive concerns from residents using tact and diplomacy, collaborates with city departments to evaluate policies and procedures to increase efficiency and customer satisfaction, develops and maintains professional relationships with employees and leadership, and analyzes resident opinions to maintain and improve resident confidence, and whereas Shamika Lee worked with 911, Fire, IT, Public Information, and a contracted call center to greatly reduce non-emergency calls to 911 over the July 4th holiday, which allowed public safety to address true emergencies and make our community safer, and whereas Shamika Lee is an authentic empathetic, I'm sorry, an authentic empathic, creative, and strategic leader who ensures the Action Center delivers excellent customer service to the residents of Oklahoma City, and whereas this council desires to recognize Shamika Lee for her dedication, compassion, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shamika Lee, October 2023, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you, Amy. Thank you, as always, to the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club, who is represented here usually, maybe he just came for the pick, but we appreciate their support of this program. This is a resolution, and so, real quick, before you speak, I think it's best we do it before you speak, that we go ahead and get this vote done. So let's see if we can get a motion in a second. We have it? Let's cast our votes. I vote aye. Passes unanimously. All right. Now Shamika, we would love to hear a few words from you, if you don't mind.
I will make it short, I promise. First, to give an honor to God, thank you for creativity and blessing me with the fabulous job. This is awesome! I would like to thank my wonderful leadership, my boss Zach, my director Kristi, my great mentor Beth, Ray, thank you for showing our brother, my brother Nelson, and my amazing team, Larry, Tanika, Vanessa, and Kelsey, thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do. Yeah, let's hear it for Shamika. For our 700,000 residents, you and the four members of your team are kind of the tip of the spear. You're the people that they talk to, so thank you so much. Let's hear it one more time for the whole Action Center team. All right, we have one more item under Office of the Mayor, and that is the notification that Councilman Bradley Carter will serve as Vice Mayor for the six-month period beginning on October 13th, and we're grateful for Vice Mayor Stone's service these past six months. Motion in a second to receive the notification. Cast your votes. You have to vote. It's in the charter, Councilman Carter. Your reluctance is noted. Passes unanimously. All right. Item four, items from council. Item 4A is a resolution approving travel expenses for council members Mark, Stan, Cypher, and Bradley Carter to attend the National League of Cities City Summit in Atlanta November 16 through 18. Six affirmative votes are required. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And item five, in with the required six affirmative votes. Item five, our City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Chris Tatham. Chris is with ETC Institute. They conduct our resident survey, and we go out for RFP on this periodically, and they've continued to gain our services and be able to provide this service force since 2005. I think, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, there's only one year that we didn't actually do the resident survey, and I think it was the year we were preparing for a bond vote, and so we skipped it that year, but we, it's the only year we haven't done that. It gives us important information that helps us in making decisions. We talked about Shamika and the Action Center and the work that they do, taking information and calls from residents, but that just gives us a portion of the view, and this is really an effort to give us a broader view of what all of our residents are thinking about our services. So I'll turn it over to Chris and let Chris give us the update.
Mayor, Council, it's great to be back. I've been here many times. This year, I have some good news to share. Things are generally moving in the right direction. I know last year, some things, as COVID opened up, there were some challenges, so I've got some good news to share with you today. If anyone's not familiar with our firm, we're based in Kansas City, but we actually do work all over the world these days. We've surveyed over three and a half million people in the past decade, and we have data from over 1,000 communities. So some of the comments that I'll be making about how Oklahoma City stacks up are based on the national data that we collect as a company. Today, I'm going to kind of walk you through the demographics, a little bit about how we did the survey. It's very similar to what we've done in the past, but just to, I like to make sure that you feel comfortable with the data because you're the ones who ultimately use it for decision-making. Then there's a lot of information in the reports, so I've tried to narrow it down to kind of three things to remember. If I go through all 600 slides today, when we're done, you'll remember those three things. And I'll kind of walk you through the highlights of the presentation. It certainly has your questions at the end. For most of you who have been around for a while, or if this is not new to you, this is really a chance to figure out, what does the average resident think of the overall quality and priority for city services? Typical meetings, you're going to hear the people who want to make change, or maybe are dissatisfied with services, but you typically don't hear from the average resident through most public processes. And so this is a tool that the city has had in place since 2005 to really kind of, each year, get a sense for how you're doing overall. We use it to basically track trends over time. We actually have a dashboard that you can actually see how things have tracked from one period to the next. And ultimately, I know you've used it very well as a city to set priorities. In fact, of all the communities we work with, particularly larger cities, you do some of the best work with responding to community needs. So with that said, here's how the survey was done. The process has been very similar. The methodologies have changed over time, but we select a random sample of households from each of the council districts each year to make sure that we get at least 150 randomly selected respondents. That's to ensure that the results are statistically valid at the council district level, but also citywide. Each year, we shoot for overall getting around 1,200 respondents. This year, we had 1,297. And what that means, when you see that plus or minus 2.7% at the 95% level of confidence for the accuracy, it just means if we did the survey 100 times, we'd get these same results within about 3% or less. So it's a very consistent sample, and I'm going to report on changes that tend to be greater than 4% when I highlight some of the trends today. As far as the representation, I just share some of these slides with you so that you know that all groups in the community are well represented. It's not perfect, but when you stack this up to the census estimates, it's pretty close. We have good distribution by age, because one of the things that we're actually looking at, the needs of different groups in the community by their age. We have good representation for gender with regard to race. These are very close to the actual racial distributions of the city when you compare them to the census. We have good distribution by income, which oftentimes affects the types and priorities of services that people need, and we also have good geographic representation. So I don't give all this information to bore you, but one of the things that I'm doing each year is making sure that is the sample representative of the community. That's our job, so that way, when you get the data, you know it does represent what residents thinks, and you can confidently use it for decision-making as needed. So with that said, let me kind of walk you through the three big things to remember this year. Number one, you probably don't celebrate it enough, but maybe when I come and remind you, you're one of the top-performing large communities in the country when it comes to the overall delivery of city services, and your commitment to resident input for so many years is, I think, one of the reasons. You don't just ask people, you actually use it. It's clear based on your track record. Number two, you're moving in the right direction. Though not everything is perfect, you're going to see that generally, things are moving favorably, especially compared to national trends. And then finally, your top priorities have not changed a lot. There's still streets and traffic flow, code enforcement, and public transportation. The new one is public police services. There are some concerns about public safety, particularly in downtown, that I'm going to highlight today. So with that, let me start off with really some of the positive things, and that's that you continue to set the standard in many areas. We ask people a number of questions about how they'd rate their community as a place to live, work, raise children, even to retire. And you can see Oklahoma City, which is in the blue bar compared to the large national average for communities over 250,000, which is gray, compared to the red bar, which is the national average for all cities, you tower above all those standards. In fact, if you look at yours as a place to work, you're 26% above the national average. And when it comes as a place to live, you're 30% above the national average. So people's general perceptions of this community are substantially better here than they are elsewhere around the country. In addition, when it comes to most of your core services, when it comes to things like fire, trash, ambulance, police, water utilities, parks and recreation, customer service, and communication, you're significantly better than the national average in all those areas. What really stands out to me are things like your trash service, nearly 35% above the national average, your fire services, over 20% above the national average, police services, you can see, are 30, or 26% above the national average, even communication and customer service, you can see, are nearly 20 and 30% above. So you're doing exceptionally well in many of the core services, which is really to be commended. Areas that you're trailing are your public transit system and your condition of streets. Because streets has improved gradually, though, over several years. You might remember, a few years ago, it was as low as 9%. So even though you're still trailing, you've nearly doubled where you were just a few years ago. When it comes to utility services, you can see residential trash collection, water service, recycling, Bog ID pickup, and water wastewater services, all are significantly above the national average. The same is true in all areas of communication compared to other communities and general perceptions of the city. The one thing I want to flag and highlight, though, today is the concern about feelings of safety in the city. You can see it actually now rates below the national and large city average. And so even though the overall quality of services, you can see, is significantly above, at 64% compared to 41%, there are some concerns about safety. So as I delved into the data and looked at some of the other questions we had, one of the things that I noticed is that the safety tended to be related to downtown area. You'll notice that in all the other areas of city parks, walking in neighborhoods, and even walking at night in your neighborhood, you rate better than the large city average, but in downtown, it's actually 12% below the national average for large communities. And what I believe is contributing to that is some of the concerns that you have about homelessness. It's actually, when I looked at some of the maps and the geographic responses, you'll notice that overall, citywide, 31% of residents were concerned or said they were seeing homelessness in their neighborhoods, but you'll notice one in four people are reporting it more than once a week. And a lot of that is people who are living near the downtown area. And so that's not unusual for Oklahoma City. It's actually a trend we're seeing in most of the large cities that we work in around the country, but I do believe that's one of the reasons that we're seeing your ratings for safety be slightly lower, is because of the impact and concerns about homelessness in the community. With that said, let me just end on a positive note, since I'm, and sometimes I emphasize the concerns, so you know what the concerns are, but back here on this slide, overall quality of city services, 64%. The national average is just 49%, and other large cities is 41%. So again, I want to keep that in perspective, even though I am highlighting an area that I think you should be aware of moving forward. Now with that said, how are things changing? This is really a tremendous sign that really shows a lot of confidence in the leadership of the city right now, as we ask people how they rate the direction the city is headed. Almost one in three people rated it as excellent. Another 42 rated it as good. You have nearly three out of four residents that think the city is moving in the right direction, either with excellent or good ratings. Only 11% give negative ratings. So you have a 71% to 11% rating. Reality, the 11% are much more likely to reach out to you. And so as a result, it may seem as if everyone thinks you're not moving in the right direction, when in fact, seven times, every time someone says you're not moving in the right direction, remember, there's seven people out there that feel exactly the opposite. And that high percentage of excellence is really great. That's really strong brand where people feel really good. When you have 29% just that are giving you the highest possible rating compared to 11% giving negative, it's almost a three-to-one rating of people who feel passionately favorable compared to those who are negative. In addition, when we look at the overall trends, there were not a lot of changes this year. In fact, this shows you 2023 and 2022, and you'll notice there are no blue arrows up or red arrows down, because the overall ratings just did not change significantly, given the sample size. There were a few areas that were a little bit better, a few areas that were a little bit worse. When we just looked at the net change, six areas improved and six major areas decreased. All those changes were less than 4%. However, when we looked at all of the items that were assessed on the survey, there were 89 total areas. We had 12 that actually went up by more than 4% or at least 4%. And you can see them listed here. Enforcement of yard parking regulations, sign regulations, animal control, removal of abandoned and operating vehicles, maintenance of neighborhoods, your golf courses, your multipurpose trails, overall perceptions of parks and recreation, cities' use of social media, your civic center music hall experience, upgraded recreation facilities, and condition of streets, all improved by 4% or more. So a lot of, magnitude-wise, we had a lot more things go up in a significant way this year compared to areas that went down. There were just three areas that decreased by 4% or more. You'll see them up here. The first one is the enforcement of cleanup of junk and debris, and then the mowing and cutting of weeds. But you might remember, last year, those were two of the areas that went up a lot, so they settled back a little bit. So long-term, they've actually moved in a positive direction. Condition of sidewalks is the only area that actually had a long-term decrease compared to your previous surveys. So all in all, things generally lean favorably. Compared to national averages, most communities are down five to six percentage points across the board from a year ago. So the fact that you stayed about the same is actually a very good thing, given the condition we see most community ratings this year. With all that said, there are opportunities for improvement. I'm going to kind of walk you through these fairly quickly. I think most of you are familiar with the analytics that we use, where we take a look at both how important services are and also how well you're doing to help identify the priorities. And these have not changed a lot. Streets and traffic flow have been at the top of the list for a long time, and you're impacted by the state highway system as well. Every big city is. And so what we find is cities that have really high-quality interstates, and there's no issues with the state highways, they tend to get a little bit better ratings. When you don't, you tend to get somewhat lower ratings. So you are impacted to some extent by that. You'll see code enforcement and public transit continue to be high. Public transit is not always important, but its overall satisfaction and expectations are growing, and that's one of the reasons you see it on this list. The new item on the list that was not there, which is the police safe, police services, is just barely risen to that high priority category, and I think it is because some of the decreases and concerns about public safety, particularly related to homelessness. And that doesn't necessarily mean that homelessness is the problem, but people get concerned about that, and that's one of the realities that we're seeing in large, large cities. The other services are still important to many people, but the way you've allocated your resources is pretty much consistent with the levels of expectations that people have, so that's why you see them as being medium priority, meaning the way you're doing and meeting those expectations is pretty much aligned with people's expectations these days. So some of the other things that we found in the survey, this is really a, a great compliment to the police here in Oklahoma City, and it could be one of the reasons your police ratings are so much higher than the national averages these days, is when we asked people whether or not they had interactions with police officers in the last year, we asked them this question to see whether or not they felt they were treated fairly by those police officers. And in most large cities in the United States, there are substantial differences based on the respondent's race. But here in Oklahoma City, you'll see the percentage of people, it's high for all of them. Whites was 91.1%. African-Americans was slightly lower at 87.2, but all in all, all groups based on race gave the police and felt that they were fairly treated, and that's unusual in most large cities across the country today. Some of the other things we looked at is what the bus service characteristics were most important to get people perhaps to consider using it. And you can see routes going to more places, bus stops being within walking distance of people's homes, and the frequency of services, that's not a surprise. People tend to want higher levels of service, and they don't want to walk very far to get to it, so that's pretty typical. Hard for you to do that in a region as large as Oklahoma City, but you actually, your downtown system is functioning very well, based on a lot of the research we've done for you in the past. When it comes to the frequency of your park usage, that's actually gone up and stayed up. It's over 70% of your folks are using your parks regularly, which is great. We also found out how people get information about Oklahoma City. And notice what is going to be probably the number-one source of information next year: social media. Just in 2019, it was only 28%. In four years, it's gone from 28, or one in four people using social media as their primary source of information about the city, to almost half. Based on the current trend, that will be the number-one source of information when I come back next year and present next year's findings. So the, one of the things we found in the survey, though, is you're doing better. That was one of the areas you improved the most on, when your communication is how well people view the social media. So the good news is, the city's keeping up with those changes, and that should be good for the city. So with everything that's in the big giant books that you got, three things that I hope you'll take away with is a lot of pride that as leaders, you've been leading the city in a path that's put you at the top of most large communities in the country. Congratulations on that. You're setting a standard in many, many areas, and you're generally moving in the right direction. In a year when most of the nation saw ratings go down, you overall stayed the same, but of things that changed, 12 areas went up significantly, just three areas went down, and two of those three areas were really coming down off a rebound from last year. Finally, the overall opportunities for improvement have not changed, but I do think it's important for you to pay attention to the issue related to perceptions of safety, particularly downtown, which appears to be impacted by some of the homelessness issues that the community's experiencing. So with that, Mayor, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions, but overall, congratulations once again for doing so well and meeting resident expectations.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Chris, it's great to have you back. This is my favorite presentation. I say that every year. But looking at today's results, as a place to live, 30% above the national average; as a place to work, 20% above the national average. The third one, though, kind of stood out at me as a place to raise children. We, we dropped a little. It was only 2.8%, but I don't know if that's because we're not communicating. There's a new publication out from the Chamber called OKC's Accolades for 2023. Oklahoma City ranks number two for young professionals, according to Forbes Magazine. Oklahoma City is a best city for commute times and good drives, according to Quote Wizard. Oklahoma City ranks in the top 20 for best places to travel to the United States, according to Forbes. Oklahomans, Oklahoma City continues to be one of the best-run cities in the United States. We're number 11 out of 50. Oklahoma City named one of the best food cities in the world, and I think that's evidenced by Andrew Black, Chef Black bringing back the James Beard Award to Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City ranks number eight for affordable housing markets. Number, the next one, Looking for a Getaway. Oklahoma City ranks number two for affordable family vacations. Scissor Tail Park has the best summer outdoor splash, splash, splash pad in the United States. Scissor Tail Park ranks number three for best summer outdoor concert series. Last, Oklahoma City ranks number nine for lowest property taxes. And so the reason I tell you all that is, this 2.8% drop, did you dig down and look, is that for, because of housing? Is that because of parks? Is that because of daycare? Is that because of schools? Or do we know why that dropped?
Yeah, nationally, we've seen a drop across the board, and it has a lot to do with concerns about public schools. That COVID introduced a lot of concerns about that. Costs for childcare have gone up. So from this survey, I can't tell you what's happening. I can just tell you that nationally, people are generally rating all of these areas lower, particularly with regard to--
Is there any way we could drill down on that next year and kind of--
We could probably, we have some other child-related surveys that we do for some communities, which have some more specific questions. For this one, we're using it kind of more of a strategic indicator for the health of the city, kind of like your, is your blood pressure okay?
Sure, sure.
If it goes, if it's too high, you don't necessarily know why, because you took your blood pressure, so there may be some opportunities to drill down, but from this survey, we don't have that ability.
And so with these OKC accolades, I think we should use social media to get the word out?
I guess so. You're doing a pretty good job. At least you got better over the last year, so.
Thanks for being here today, again.
Thanks for the presentation. I think--
I think this is more of a question, perhaps existential, for the city manager. Can you go back? I know existential, and it's not even, it's not even 10:00 AM. There was a slide, I can't recall the one, but it was one that talked about the street conditions, but it also mentioned sidewalks. It was very, very early.
Probably. This is-- I think you probably, this one has some of the detail. Yeah, I didn't, I may not have had that slide. I know which slide you're talking about. I don't know if I had it in this presentation. It's a breakout--
Yeah, I think you referenced it and talked about it up front.
It's in the breakout section if you have the report for the maintenance services. And I can probably tell you real quickly if you're interested, is that--
Which page? Because I actually, I'm sorry, I do want to drill down in there.
Yeah, actually, if you take a look at page 22 of the report, that actually shows the breakout of the detailed maintenance questions. So that's where you'll see major streets. Sidewalks is in the middle of the list. You'll see that decreased.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Okay. So it, it would be, it seems to me it would be a mistake to, as we head into our next bond, to just focus on, and I've said it before, but this highlights it, this report, to focus on just when it comes to street resurfacing, to just resurface the streets. Because that's not what our residents are saying in this response. What they are pointing out, when you look, again, I'm on page 22, maintenance services, right? It says, condition of city street signs, condition of streets in your neighborhood, condition of landscaping or streetscaping, condition of sidewalks. We have really begun to row in a better direction since the last bond, where we do the street enhancement projects. So we don't just resurface a street, right? We're looking at the entire, we're thinking of the complete street, right? We're thinking of the condition of the entirety of the street. In other words, how walkable is that street, right? Do we have sidewalks there? Do we have good lighting? Do we have good crosswalks? In what condition is the street itself in terms of its need for resurfacing? So what I'm really interested in heading into the next bond, which I believe is coming 2025, is at the very least, I can't speak for the other words, but I know in Word 2, where walkability is such a high priority, I would really be interested in constructing a bond project as it relates to street resurfacing. That includes that when you resurface that street, you also, if BikeWalk OKC has identified that street as a place for sidewalks, do it at the same time. Do it at the same time. I'm seeing some nodding heads. Good, good, good. Oh, good. But we have to be intentional. We can't just take that what I said right now is going to happen. Because remember, the 2007 bond, and those who've been with the city long enough will know this, but some of our new residents might not, but the 2007 bond went too far. It said, anytime you repave a street or widen a street out at whatever street it is, put sidewalks on both sides of the road. Well, then we pulled back dramatically in the 2017 bond, and we did not include any when a street is resurfaced that a sidewalk would go with it. It was separated, and Craig knows this because he was there. That's put us behind right now, where we've missed opportunities where in the 2017 bond, we could have been resurfacing a street and constructing or repairing a sidewalk and putting in walkability features. And so it is my strong guidance that we pay attention to what the residents are telling us here in our own survey, where they're saying street conditions, conditions of sidewalk, and they're talking about landscaping and streetscaping. Well, that's a cousin of the street enhancements like we're doing in 39th Street District or the Paseo District and what's coming soon to so many different commercial corridors. So that's a, that's a Craig note. City manager, thank you very much. So yeah, I just, I wanted this council and its residents to think holistically and not just go, oh, we're going to resurface our streets. Because you can resurface a street. But, and you know, I do have a bit of an answer to why our kids are, this is not necessarily the best place sometimes to raise the kids, is it really always goes back to that same Stanford economic research I have quoted to the point where it should be biblical up here, right? Like, for every year a kid grows up in a better environment, pregnancy goes down, right? Their college chances go up. They earn more over their lifetime. They have more stable family environment. That literally does mean the built environment. It means in what condition, how walkable, bikeable is that neighborhood? You heard the arts humanity folk up here say that the arts lead to the quality of life too. So the condition of the landscaping and the streetscaping in our neighborhood, is there public art? Do we see it? Do your children, what do your children see when they walk out their front door to the bus stop? It, it's that simple. And that's why parents are responding to us, saying that we are not meeting the mark the way that we could there. And that's not just a public education issue. That is the condition of your neighborhoods. And I'm seeing parents in the crowd nodding their heads right now. So I just think we got to be very holistic in how we do these bond projects. One final thing on that. This relates to public transit, because one of the things you saw in the survey as well is how, one of the three aspects, can we go to the slide about public transit? You had three things you said about public transit there.
I think you're looking at this one?
No, it was the one where you had three things underlined for us in terms of--
The three things you remember?
Yes.
There you go. There you go.
No. It was the one where you, well, it's on page--
Oh, the trends. I think you're looking, or maybe the comparisons nationally?
It's before you get to quote, this is confusing, but before you get to page one in the survey, there are Roman numeral pages in the executive summary. And on Roman numeral six, you have additional findings where you've identified the top three bus service characteristics that are important to residents when considering whether or not to use public transit. Of course, routes going to more places, how often the bus comes by their stop, but the third thing connects to what I have just described, bus stops within walking distance of the home. So again, that first mile, last mile sidewalk connectivity, repairing of our sidewalks and the building of new sidewalks, the, and if you were to go to the Paseo right now or Jefferson Park or Central Park, you would see where you'll have fits and starts of sidewalks, fits and starts of sidewalks. And that's what my residents are asking for us to repair. They want, fill in where we need to and rebuild where we have to. And those sidewalks should be guiding people to that beautiful new $28 million bus rapid transit system on Klassen. And I just want to connect those dots for everybody, that it really is about the repaving a good street condition so that when parents and single folk are driving, on those streets are good, but the sidewalks are critical there too. And it's connecting to the public transit system for people who are using it to move around our city as well. And it is important that people did not just tune out to what I just said, because these were the priorities that our own residents are saying. This is not just my vision. This is literally what the results are telling us, and we should not be looking at these results in a vacuum. That is my guidance. Oh, I said one more thing, but Craig, city manager, can you, as we head into this bond, report back to us this dilemma, which is we are the only state that refuses to let its cities use property tax to address our ongoing city services. We're the only state in the union, and that is a state statute that prevents us from doing that, which means it's only every 10 years, right, that we get to use the property tax to fund infrastructure improvements. And we didn't pass that bond from 74 to 95. I keep saying that up here because I remain very confused. If we're 20 years behind, and we can't tap into the property tax except for those every 10 years, how are we ever, not even just get ahead, how are we ever going to get to neutral, to good? And what are we going to, like, what is the answer to our residents? Like, that is my question. And, and that's the, that's what I mean by existential. It's a systemic, it's a bigger question. And I linger on it because I didn't, I just think it's so important, it's so important that we answer that question, particularly for residents who think that they are being taxed too much right now, but they're not. Not from us, not from the city government, they're not, right? So what is that answer for them? What do we do? And that's what I, oh. And Councilman Stonecypher, when I say these things, because I can imagine you right now, when you heard the concern about the rating for children, you answered it by giving the positives. That's, that's fine. I just want everyone to know that when these sorts of criticisms happen, let's hit the criticisms. Like, let's respond. Let's admit that two things can be true at once. We can be both a great city where people want to live, work, retire, but that we have work to do. And I just think that's important. I just, I don't want us to move away from that.
I agree with you 100%. And the one thing I would say is that is why I raised it, and that's why I asked if we could drill down on that further next year when the survey's performed.
Thank you.
I'd just like to sort of second everything Councilman Cooper mentioned. I think I did this last year because we had, I think, a similar sort of perception about homelessness, and I just always feel compelled to point out that people experiencing homelessness are not inherently dangerous, and that these are people's perceptions. And while for many, and we have to recognize that people's perceptions translate to actions and realities that they experience, that we also need to be comparing these numbers to other data points. And I think, Councilman Cooper, your point about looking at sort of these other areas is, and sort of drilling down, is, is well taken because it just always, like, I live downtown, and what this says is not my experience day to day. Like, do I see people experiencing homelessness? Yes. Do I see people that I assume others might be, think are homeless? Yes. But I don't think they are homeless. So like, I think people's perceptions of folks that maybe don't have the same hygiene routines or live in pretty extreme poverty but are living inside and, again, are not inherently dangerous. Just because someone looks different than me and has different behaviors does not mean they are dangerous. And so I just always want to lift that up because I worry that our, the common sense response is, well, we need more police presence, or we need more, we need to like shoo those people out of our community, but like, those are my neighbors, they're our neighbors, and we, we have some serious issues as it relates to living wages, upward mobility, economic access for people that contribute to people living day to day quite chaotically and having difficult responses to difficult situations in their lives. And so if they are escalated and frustrated, that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to be scared of them, but we do need to understand all of those things. And like, on a regular basis, I interact with neighbors that are in that state, and maybe they're asking me for resources or money or something, and I try my best, as I'm able, to check in with them, you know, try to assist where I can, point them in direction of resources. But I worry sometimes when we, when people's initial reaction is fear rather than a curiosity about where that person's coming from, that our response as a city and as city leadership is going to be the continued failed response that I think we constantly kind of come back to, which is, again, sort of assuming criminality and assuming some kind of, yeah, nefarious behavior versus, well, maybe that person just like needs, you know, connection and access to various resources that will help them not, you know, end up engaging in things potentially if, if that even is the case. Our assumptions, I think, are that they're going to engage in something that we've criminalized, but more often than not, I worry that sometimes people's perceptions of folks that don't look like them in various ways, both skin color, again, like, the way they, the access to like the type of clothes they wear or whatever it is, that somehow they're, they're dangerous and that's scary to be downtown. But there's just like absolutely the opposite of my experience on it. Like, I see people going to and fro to the things they need and to work, and, and so I just always feel compelled to point that out and name that so that it's not lost in the conversation about, are these people's perceptions? Yes. But I think we need to take those perceptions sometimes with a grain of salt and not assume or jump to the conclusion that somehow the answer is removing those people from sight just for the sake of removing them from sight. And so that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
I just actually had a couple of comments and questions at the same time. First, as we look at the perception of the city, especially the question as it relates to quality of downtown, that was one of the concerns that I continued to read as far as the open-ended question for people to respond of Bricktown Downtown, which was pretty disturbing. And so my question to you, and I didn't see it, and maybe that's something we can look at in the future, as we ask that specific question of their perception of downtown, have we asked how many times they've visited downtown within that year? Because in my opinion, when we look at just some things that have happened and when you watch the news, that's going to put fear in places you do or do not want to go and actually give some places a bad rap instead of saying, this is a place you can come and enjoy this, this part of our community. So I'm very curious about that. That's question one.
Don't remember off the top of my head. I know we have asked it at times in the past, whether it was this survey, I do not recall. Just pulled up the results, and though the concerns you may see about downtown, the downtown ratings for Oklahoma City are vastly better than most communities around the country. You can see compared to other large cities, you're 20% above the national average. The item that I was highlighting had to do with the fact that your safety rating was a little bit lower, and that's where it's the perception in downtown. So your rating for safety in downtown has dropped, but overall perceptions of the downtown itself are still very, very good, if that makes sense. So that's, so your rating's still very well as a city for downtown.
Yes, it makes sense, and I think we're both fairly talking about the same thing. But I guess just, just my curiosity is, how many of these respondents have actually visited, you know, within that same timeframe of a year? For them to physically say, this is what we see and this is how we feel, other than the perception of what we've read.
And if we haven't included that, I don't remember off the top of my head, we can certainly add that. I know historically we have, and for a number of communities, we ask that question so you can just gauge recent experiences versus long-term experiences.
Thank you. Another question I had, if we can go back to the question about officers, the police by race. I find it interesting that we put our minority groups on top of this, of this response where we see the, some other groups representative--
Talk about the Asians, African-American.
Yes.
It's alphabetical.
Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. One of the reasons I'm looking at that is because as we look at the responding numbers, 1,297, we also look at the breakdown by race of respondents, which would be 63.8%. So I'm assuming that's about 800 people or more. And for our African-American community, we're looking at about 160. And our Asian population, we're looking at about 51, if, if I, if my math is correct. So to me, as I look at the response of us being able to, and I understand this is representative of what our census numbers are, but as we look at, and if you dig deep into what we're really looking at as far as numbers, this is a swayed representation, in my opinion, of, of what we look at as far as our communities having a real opportunity. of, of what we look at as far as our communities having a real opportunity to be a respondent to surveys such as this. And my, my last thing I just wanted to mention is, as we look at, again, some more of these conversations, I know we, we have said that we have a responsive, of really good communication and, and police safety, but as I read some of these comments about police interactions, I'm very nervous of what I'm reading from respondents. So I, I'm curious if we're going to be able to publish all of these open-ended, this whole survey, especially the open-ended comments for people to be able to look at and, and understand and read for themselves of what is going on as, as far as this, this survey is concerned.
Lori, we actually post the entire survey on the website, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, happy to post that, so thank you. And just, just one last thing. I know we talked about our, our award winners, James Beard, but I do want to say, we wouldn't have had Chef Black had it not been for Florence's bringing that home the year before for that James Beard Award. So I always want to make sure that we're giving and, and giving just due to our community members. But overall, thank you for the survey. I know for a lot of our communities, one, we receive responses are by mail, is a text message in mail.
Yeah, we send out, well, it's mail, it's email, it's texted. We even do direct social media ads to encourage people to participate.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate the relationship, appreciate your team and all the work that you all do. I do want to acknowledge that, you know, when you look at a lot of these ratings, like overall ratings on the city, I think, to give credit to our elected officials for your leadership, I think a lot of that's reflection of your leadership. But I also want to acknowledge, one of my favorite measures, and I know we look at right track, wrong track, and we look at, at the direction the city's headed and the place to live and all, but that rating of city services overall is one that I really like to emphasize, and it's a reflection, we've got 5,000 employees out there serving our residents every day, and I think it's something that we want to give credit to our employees and the work that they do every single day, serving our residents in so many different ways, and I'm so grateful for the work that they do. So thank you all again for your work and your partnership.
It's great to be here, and just congratulations. I know a lot of times there's areas to continue focusing on, but Oklahoma, you gotta think, we do this for hundreds of cities every year, and you are certainly one of the best performers and most responsive to your residents. So thanks for letting me share today.
Thank you.
The only other thing that we have on our reports is the budget transfers report. There's certain level of budget transfers that we can make administratively, and we commit to bringing a report forward every year, reports forward throughout the year, and this is actually the year-end report for FY '23. So that report is on there, we don't have any presentation or anything, and that's all that we have on city manager reports.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item six, our Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. Motion in a second. Councilman Carter, they tell me, how would you like to vote? Passed unanimously. Okay, item seven, requests for uncontested continuances. Item 11H is asked to be withdrawn. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, beginning on page 13, item 11K1, unsecured structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 2321, South Central Avenue, the owner is secured. Item C, 3023, South Cleggurn, Cleggern Avenue, the owner is secured. Item F, 8917, South Indiana Avenue, the owner is secured. Item G, 5009, North Nebraska Avenue, the owner is secured. Item I, 11,00609, Twisted Oak Road, the owner is secured. Item J, 19,000, 009, Via Drive, the owner is, the owner has occupied that property. Item N, 1541, Northeast 20th Street, the owner is secured. Item R, 1412, Southwest 33rd Street, the owner is secured. Item S, 11,100, Southwest 40th Street, the owner is secured. Item T, 3828, Southwest 41st Street, the owner is secured. And item U, 2640, Southwest 43rd Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on page 13, on the abandoned buildings, all of these items are stricken from the agenda, and all the items that I will list here were listed previously, so they're being stricken for the same reasons that they were on the previous with unsecured structures. Item C, 2321, South Central Avenue. Item E, 11,00609, Twisted Oak Road. Item F, 19,009, Via Drive. Item J, 1541, Northeast 20th Street. Item M, 1412, Southwest 33rd Street. Item N, 3828, Southwest 41st Street. And item O, 2640, Southwest 43rd Street. And that's all the items that I have.
All right, thank you. Item eight, revocable permits and events. Item 8A is an athletic facility use agreement with USA Touch and the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau for competitive touch rugby activities at the Wendell Wizzenhut Sports Complex. That is on October 12th through the 14th. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Hammond?
I will move for approval.
Have a motion in a second. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Downtown OKC Partnership to hold Bricktown Trick or Treat on October 23rd, and we have Justin O'Neill signed up to speak.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Just here to talk about Trick or Treat, which will take place Monday, October 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are, we're requesting to close down Mickey Mantle from Sheridan Torino and the connecting alleyways, mostly due to the high traffic of pedestrians. We see about 15,000 to 17,000 people at this event, which is great for this short amount of time. We have over 50 businesses that participate handing out candy, performances, the Oklahoma City Thunder, the Oklahoma City Dodgers, everyone comes out. It's a great community event that takes up the whole District of Bricktown, so that's our request.
Thank you. Councilwoman Neith?
Yes, thank you. This means I get to wear my Barbie power jumpsuit a week early.
100%.
I'm very excited about that, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is a revocable right-of-way use permit with VI Marketing and Branding to hold Carne Diem on October 20th. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Neith, uh, Councilwoman Hammond?
I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll recess council now and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through F we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. I want to note that item A, we figured out after the last meeting that uniquely golf commission appointments need to appear under PPA. It's actually a commission that is a creature of PPA, and so even though you may have recalled this same appointment on last meeting's agenda, it actually needed to be here to be valid, and so that's where it is. And also, we have a presentation for item B under the PPA agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. David Todd, our MAPS Program Director, will introduce the team and talk about this item.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. Recall that we sent out another RFP for operators for what we refer to as Wellness Center III. This is the Wellness Center for MAPS III at Northeast 36th and Lincoln. There were two respondents, and we went through the usual process with a, a committee, and then that committee recommended to the subcommittee and then to the advisory board, and we're happy to bring that to you today. So Isabelle Lawson, Isabella Lawson is here today with Community Health, and they're going to tell you a little bit about community health.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just thank you all, first of all, for just having us here today to present this opportunity. And we're very excited about this, being, becoming Operators of Senior Wellness Number Three. So first of all, just want to just kind of go through a few slides to discuss who we are and why do we care to want to do this, to actually take over Operators of Senior Wellness Number Three? And also, what will the structure be when we, we become operators? And we'll also discuss what programs we will offer. We'll do a little budget review, and then finally, we'll do a little timeline, exactly on how this process will, will happen. But first of all, let me get my clicker here. Let me introduce to you to my community action planning team that's here, most of them here today. I have Ms. Ozender Robinson, she's our operations director. Leondra Moore is our behavioral health director. Mr. John Pettis is our intergovernmental community liaison. Barbara Colbert is our Healthy Start Case Manager Supervisor, and I have Ms. Jeanie Hannah-Williams here, she's our chief financial officer, and Ms. Carrie Smith is also here. She is another community liaison. And I have four members that are not present today. And that's Ms. Phoebe Matthew, Dr. Dunn-Cumby, one of our board members, and Dr. Vicky Lampli-Dallas, and also Yolanda Viewings, he's, she's a navigator, community navigator. So who are we? We are a community federally qualified health center that was founded in 1971. We have been serving here in the four central counties of Oklahoma, providing services, medical, behavioral health, dental, and case management services to the public. We have served, last year we served over 14,000 patients and over 45,000 patient encounters. And we recently celebrated our 50-year anniversary. Some of our services I just mentioned, but I'm going to go, just like I said, a little bit faster. Why do we care? So it is so important, as we look forward, to holistic approach on wellness in our community and improving our health disparities, which we all know is at a low national level, is one of the lowest in the nation as far as health. So why do we care? We're committed to high-quality health services for northeast Oklahoma City area since 1973, and research shows that those who embrace wellness as part of their everyday lives see significant improvements in longevity and life quality. And also, it's our desire to create measurable improvements in our service area that positively impact the health and wellness. Community focus. Your community, your health, our mission. That's one of our taglines. Our vision is in the name, community focused on improving health by the promotion of recreation and wellness. What will our structure be? So since we've been a health center for 50 years, we decided to expand and develop an LLC. And our LLC will cover operations as far as recreational projects, which the senior wellness centers fits under. So we developed an LLC, and with the mission to build and foster opportunities which promote dignity, wellness, independence, enjoyment, community, and sense of purpose for older So here we have an, our overall organizational structure. So at the top is going to be Community Health Centers Incorporated, and then underneath the LLC, it'd be the CEO, we'll hire a branch manager, but the key points, as you can see, is the community partners we'll be working with. One is Healthy Living. Healthy Living has been consulting with us since we received the, the award, the proposal, was awarded the proposal. As you all know, Healthy Living shows a very successful operation, a wellness center number one, so we meet with them at least once a week, just getting our feet under our, under the ground, understanding, and just not reinventing the wheel when we do not have to. They have been very instrumental on us becoming very successful as operators. Metro Tech Technology. Metro Tech has a wellness group, they do a lot of physical activities, so we are partnering them with also and collaborating our schedules to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be involved in classes, activities as far as crafts, et cetera. Of course, the community health center leadership team, lots of experience, ranging from 10 years of experience to 40 years of experience as our chief medical, I mean, as our human resource director, but we will definitely be there to also help our branch manager. And of course, we will develop a community, a member community advisory board. This board will be made up of members of the actual senior wellness center that will give us feedback, okay? Will tell us what we're doing wrong, help us move along as advisors, and also, we will use those persons to bring in new talents, okay? See, what, what do you want to do? Like, we, we mentioned to the, the group that we went to present to Lincoln Park, this center is your center. It's all about what you, talents you want to see, what do you want to see as far as improvement. Then at the bottom, we have, we will hire these persons, a volunteer coordinator, a social program coordinator, a membership coordinator, front desk staff, physical fitness coordinator, and a facilities coordinator. Just going to go to some of our goals as well. Of course, once again, just focusing on our senior population. And this senior population, 50 and over, it ranges, it's a huge range there. We have, of course, people are living longer, there's different things, different interests. So we'll definitely look at helping seniors, adults connect with other senior adults and provide a community through social wellness activities and initiatives. So as we know, the pandemic caused a lot of issues with some of our seniors being isolated for so long, but this has given us a chance to actually provide these social services, to actually come out, meet each other, play some dominos, play some, do some line dancing, do a, tap into a talent that you didn't know you had. Membership campaign, where are we going to get our members from? So first of all, we're going to do founding members. We're going to look at the first 250 people, looking, develop a founder's wall, actually offer $800 membership for three years, it'll be paid, and different things as VIP functions for those members. Also, transfer of Lincoln Park members. As you all know, that was one of the, was one of the things, the YMCA is over the Lincoln Park, and now bringing those members over to the new center because that, the Lincoln Park location will be closed. So we have been up there every week, every other week, actually talking to those members, making sure that they know it's going to be a smooth transition, okay, as we move forward, because there has been a lot of questions, a lot of insecurities on whether they're going to have a place to actually go. So that has been worked out very, very well, and we thank the YMCA for that, for giving us that opportunity to make sure that transition works. Of course, we have volunteers, we have volunteers, and we're going to start a telephone campaign, reaching out to different people, saying, hey, guess what's in your community? We're also teaming up with some of the local radio stations, doing commercials, et cetera, to make sure we have the, let everybody know that we have this hidden jewel in northeast Oklahoma City. Mailouts, flyer distribution, and also presentations. Definitely teaming up with our faith-based organizations to actually become a part, make sure their members, not only the ministers, but their members are aware and want to actually take advantage of this services. So what will we offer? Everything. We will be open on Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Friday, 6:00 to 6:00, Saturdays, 8:00 till 2:00, and then we'll be closed on Sunday to start off with. One thing, we want to make sure that classes, all the classes that are offered, we're going to make sure there's an intermediate level, I mean, a beginner's level, intermediate level, and an advanced level for everyone, is, as well as some of the, the, some of the classes have chair, if you can use a chair exactly for, to do the senior, senior silver sneakers, et cetera. But also games. We have bingo, dominos, puzzles, pool tables, checkers, chess, card games, exercise classes, activities. We have zumba, yoga, tai chi, line dancing, cardio and stretch, open swim hours, water aerobics, and pickleball. Of course, we have to have pickleball, right? So that's where we are and what we will offer. Very excited, we've been meeting with a lot of potential instructors, from aquatics to physical fitness, as well as the Arts Council. We have been to visit with them, I'm bringing different liberal arts in at different events then throughout the month, so we're very excited about that as well. Budget review. I'm just going to skip to, well, let's start here. So what is our plan? Our plan is year one to have 1,500 members. Plan two, year two, 2,500 members. Year three, 3,500 members. And year four, 4,500 members. Year five, 5,500 members is what our plan and overall goal, but that is very conservative. We do believe that we will exceed those numbers. Of course, we'll be offering, our basic fee is $25 a month, but we will be offering a sliding fee schedule opportunity for those who cannot afford it. a sliding fee schedule opportunity for those who cannot afford it. And we'll offer also, we'll be accepting insurances, silver sneakers, and other managed care, Medicare managed care plans, for those who are, who are, for those that actually have those services, actually have those insurance plans, excuse me. Additional notes. Okay, so we're starting up with $250,000, and where that's coming from is reserve funds as well as other committed donors. Membership numbers are, like I said, conservative, are likely to exceed that. Scholarship funds as well, of course, we are, we, in our original proposal, we asked for a certain amount of money for scholarship funds, but we're going to have to figure out another way on how to apply for that through MAPS IV. The annual expense increases assume about a 5% increase unless otherwise noted. Salaries, the first year, two years, the salaries stay consistent, and then we'll do a 3%, 3% to 5% increase for all of our employees. So what are we going to do as well to, what are our additional revenue services, sources? What are we going to do to make sure we stay afloat? We're going to have annual giving options, fundraising events such as pickleball tournaments and art sales, and we're also plan, planned giving, grant writing, and as well as opportunities for naming rights of the facility, as well as individual, other locations within the facility. So what is our projected timeline? So of course, we got approval from, in September, from the MAPS committee, as well as the, yeah, then we've got approval in October from the Citizens Advisory Committee. But our main thing in October is actually start a membership drive, of course, and complete our activity schedule, and then we start preparing for the grand opening, which we have done that as well with Ms. Jaeger. In November 2023, we'll start our hiring process, and then we'll have some pre-grant opening activities, and then we'll, the facility will be open to the public just as a trial and era to make sure we kind of get all the bumps and bruises out of the way. And finally, December 2023, we will have our grand opening, December the 7th. On December the 8th, we'll be open to the public completely, as far as activities. Okay, have any questions from?
Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm excited about this project. The one thing I'm excited about is that you'll be working with Healthy Living, who went through this process with Wellness Center Number One. I remember when we first projected our membership number, we were hoping to have approximately 1,500 members within a year. And when we got to a little after a year, we had almost 6,000 members. And the one thing that kind of stands out in my memory about that is that we had a certain market area that we thought we would project to, and it turned out that we had a large number of people that came outside of that market area. So I think that's important to remember as, as, as marketing occurs. And lastly, I will tell you, our biggest problem was, we didn't have enough pickleball courts.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Well, I'll say, challenge accepted. Let's see how many members we can get.
Yes, exactly.
First of all, I am so excited that we are here, and I always want to give thanks and gratitude to our seniors, because had it not been for our committed seniors, this would not be the location, and they would not have been the forward-thinking of how this particular center would be built, and also the intricate details that will be included, is because they were there from the planning to planning again. So I want to say always, thank you to them, and we took a couple of trips to go look at a couple of other centers, the number one and number two. So if you can imagine, taking a bunch of seniors to a couple of places so they can look at buildings, just, they were like kids in a candy store, imagining the things that they wanted to see in this center, and now we're here. So very grateful, and also, this is a seamless transition, so very grateful for you all. Unfortunately, Lansing University received a really large gift from Channel Nine as a TV station, and clearly, they said, "We can't do both." But I'm grateful that they realized and understood that they could not take on both. And for you all to already be a partner with them, it's just a smooth transition, so very grateful for the work that you all will be doing. And I want to commit today to be one of your founding folks for this center. I don't know, I'm not old enough, so I hope I can be an honorary member.
I think we can make that work.
Thank you, or else I'll just transfer it to my mom. But either way, when I tell you the buzz with the seniors, they are very excited, very excited as well, and we can finally get some life into this part of our community as far as health and wellness, committed health and wellness for our seniors. So I know a lot of seniors have been asking about the, the payment opportunity, and this is a transition. This is a transition for everyone, because right now where they are located, they don't pay. And now they're about to go and embark on a new center where there is a cost.
Yes.
So I think it's very important for us to realize what we do as far as even our city is concerned, when we, we provide these types of facilities, and then we ask the community to pay for the service of something they've already paid for.
Right.
When they use their tax dollars to pay for it already. But either way, very grateful for the work that you all are doing, and I know you all will be working and committed to ensuring that our seniors have no barriers to this center, and I look forward to playing dominos and bingo on December the 7th. And pickleball, you want to play with me?
Yeah.
Okay, so December 7th, we will be playing pickleball.
Hey, December 8th, can we have a court?
Yeah, I'm with it.
Sounds good. And I'm glad you mentioned that about payment. So we're doing, I mean, a wide variety of ways to pay, and definitely making sure if they qualify for any kind of scholarships, reaching out, getting more grants to actually pay for those who can't even afford the, the reduced rate as far as sliding fee schedule. So we'll definitely, we're going to do an online app, going to have our own app, it's going to make it very, very painless as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then we can adopt the PPA docket, items A through C with one motion. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council. We're on item nine, the consent docket. There are no scheduled presentations under the consent docket, but are there any items that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote or a separate comment?
Yes, I'd like to pull out item U for a separate vote.
Okay, well, we'll start there then. Item U is a resolution recognizing the Oklahoma City Housing Authority as a sole source vendor, et cetera, and this has been requested for a separate vote, so we could pick a motion on that. I don't know if there's any comments or debate. Bearing none, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes on item U. Passes eight to one. We're back on the remainder of the consent docket, and we can take a motion on that. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. This is for the remainder of the consent docket, other than item U. Passes unanimously. Now we're on item 10, the concurrents docket, we have items A through L we can take with We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're now at item 11, items requiring separate votes, and I'm going to hand the gavel to Vice Mayor Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Brings us to item 11 on the agenda, items requiring separate votes. We'll start with item 11A. Ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, PUD 1963, rezoning 11503 Southwest 29th Street from AA Agricultural District to PUD 1963, Ward 3, Councilwoman Peck.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone signed up to speak?
No.
No. Okay. Yeah, this is with the recommended approval, so I'll move for approval as well.
We have a first and a second, please cast your votes. Any item passes? Brings us to item 11B. 11B is ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, SPUD 1550 rezoning 1105 Southeast 51st Street from R1 Single Family Residential District to SPUD 1550 in Ward 4. This is simply an expansion of a auto dealership right off I-35. If there's no questions or comments, I'll go ahead and move it for approval. We have a motion in a second. And the item passes. Brings us to item C on the agenda. This is a ordinance recommended for approval, SPUD 1552 rezoning 1612 North Virginia Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District to SPUD 1552. This is Ward 6, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this is just some straightforward in-fill recommended for approval by the planning commission, so I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second, please vote. And item C passes. Brings us to item D on the agenda. Ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, SPUD 1554 rezoning 1116 Northwest 49th Street from PUD 1603 Planned Unit Development District to SPUD 1554. Ward 2, Councilman Cooper.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? There is. Ask and ye shall receive.
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. So this is a SPUD that will allow the structure that's been used as an office for the dry cleaner to remain that. We came through with a PUD many years ago, and there was a lot of protest based upon the use of this structure. Prior to moving forward with this, my client, who owns the dry cleaning business, spent a lot of time in the neighborhood, had several meetings, and after that, we moved forward with no protests and support from the neighbors. So this is a SPUD that, again, would just allow that current use to remain. Staff did recommend approval, as well as planning commission.
Thank you. Well, with that background and with that work, I would move for approval, please. Will move.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Thank you.
Item D passes. Brings us to item E. Ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, SPUD 1555 rezoning 2801 South Sierra Road from AA Agriculture District to SPUD 1555, Ward 3, Councilwoman Peck.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Planning commission recommended approval, summary of technical evaluation, so I'll also move it.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. Item E passes. Brings us to item F on the agenda. Recommended for approval, SP 576, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishments, sit-down alcohol permitted in the D2D-1 Downtown Transitional Limited and DP Downtown Parking Overlay Districts, 808 Northwest 6th Street, Ward 6, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this was recommended for approval, as you mentioned, and I would, after I make the motion for approval and we vote on that, I would also like to move for an emergency. My understanding is, when this was originally noticed, it wasn't given the, it was supposed to be a larger area because it's a special permit, and so they had to renotice, that took an extra month of delay, and so just to give the applicant kind of that month back almost, I'd, I'd really like to make sure that we, we have that emergency. So I will move for approval for the, the first, just passing the ordinance.
We have a motion in a second.
I'd like to move the ordinance with an emergency, or move the emergency.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. And item F passes with the required emergency votes. Brings us to item G. This is going to be a good one. Ordinance on final hearing recommended for denial, SPUD 1551 rezoning 1233 Southeast 44th Street from R1 Single Family Residential, C3 Community Commercial, and C4 General Commercial Districts to SPUD 1551. And it's in Ward 4. I can tell you on this one, I've been working with this property owner for probably close to a year. And sometimes, when we try to throw a big blanket over the whole city and say, "Well, here's what it should look like," in certain areas, there's things that they can do that will improve that neighborhood, and this is one of those areas. So if there are no questions or comments, I will be happy to move for its approval.
I am, just, question? I am curious as to the denial. I mean, I'm just, I understand you wanting to approve it, but I am curious as to why our planning commission thought that we should deny this application.
So, my understanding was, well, let me go back even before that and just kind of explain the situation a little bit. This is a appliance store that has been in business for years and years and years. And they have, honestly, they have a big stack of appliances outside on their property. They're screened from the front, but occasionally, you get a glimpse of it, and it's not good. He originally, he originally was trying to work with the city and, and work with a contractor. He kind of got hosed on the contractor piece, he paid about 50% upfront, and they said they would get all the required permitting and everything, they didn't, never heard from him again. So he's been following up with that. Then he started having problems trying, working with a different contractor to get the permitting, because, as you can tell when I read through here, different little pieces of this property, there's R1, C3, C4. And in talking to him, the whole reason he's trying to build this metal, all it is is a metal storage building behind his building, so that he can take those appliances and put them within this metal storage building, which will be a great benefit for the community around this area. The reason that, my understanding was, the reason that it got denied partly was because he has this outstanding number of appliances currently, so.
Okay, as, as you were talking, I was pulling it up on Google Maps, you know, the be, end all be all, and I see that he has a fence that kind of closes, so it would shield the public from seeing this, all of the appliances anyway, correct? Was that built during this process?
It was there, I can tell you that was there when I was there, but like, if any traffic is going in and out the back, that gate's open, you see all those appliances there.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Motion should be to include the TEs.
Oh, I'm sorry. And the motion should be to include the TEs on this, so I'll go ahead and make the motion for approval with the TEs. Where do you see denied? Active motion adopted. Oh, it's recommended for denial.
Right. So if we approve this, we're denying it?
No.
No.
It's active motion adopted, we're adopting it, it was recommended for denial.
Mr. Vice, just to be clear, your motion is to approve the application?
Correct. All right, we have a motion in a second, please vote. And the item passes. I appreciate everyone looking, looking at that one. All right, brings us to item H. All right, brings us to item H on the agenda, which was withdrawn. Brings us to item I. Is this the one?
Yes.
Okay, we have a presentation?
Yes. Regina Story is the Director of our Employee Retirement System, really appreciate her leadership with the Employee Retirement System, and just care for our employees. She's going to explain what changes are being made here in this ordinance.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council, Regina Story from the Retirement System. This item, Congress passed Secure Act 2.0 last December in 2022 between Christmas and New Year, and it had 92 different provisions that impacted retirement plans, both in the private sector and the public sector. This is simply a cleanup by our tax council. The language proposed was to align with this Secure Act legislation. So the two applicable Secure Act changes to the code are changes to the required minimum distribution age, increasing that age for certain participants born in certain years, and then also public safety plans had been required in the Helps Act back in 2006 to pay health insurance premiums directly from their retired benefits, and the recent Secure Act legislation that was passed in December deleted that requirement, so that's why that's multiple places being deleted. So those are the Secure Act changes, and then additionally, since we are making a code change, the, with the retirement of one of the chief officers at the zoo, the zoo had requested that we clarify language regarding the zoo employees who may be eligible to withdraw from the pension and be eligible into our money purchase, money, money purchase plan, just to match what their current structure is in their organization, so that when they onboard future chief officer positions, there's no ambiguity. So that's the clarification on the zoo language, but if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, we can take a motion on the item. We have a motion and a second. And it passes, thank you. Brings us to item 11J. One, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak? If not, we can move to item J2, resolution declaring structures are dilapidated. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Item J2 passes. Brings us to item 11K. K1 is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. No one has signed up to speak, so we'll move to item K2, which is a resolution declaring the structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Item K2 passes. Item L1 is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. And no one has signed up to speak, so we'll move to L2, which is a resolution declaring the buildings as abandoned. We have a motion and a second. And the item passes. Item M. I believe we have a presentation?
Yes, Chris Browning, our Water Utilities Director, should be in here momentarily and will give us a presentation on this item. It is incurring indebtedness for the Water Utility Trust through the Water Resources Board and will require six affirmative votes. As Chris gets in here, he can talk just about what we're doing with the funding and the need for this indebtedness. We moved a little faster than you expected, right?
You did. We were solving the problems of the world back there. Good morning, Chris Browning, Utilities Director. So the Oklahoma Water Resources Board administers the federal Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program for Oklahoma, and every year, we present a group of projects to them for consideration for funding. On July 18th, the Water Trust approved a resolution agreeing to file a loan application with the OWRB for financial assistance in their Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. On September 19th, the OWRB approved the trust's loan application at their board meeting. The reason we do this is because the interest rate, although we're a AAA rated organization, the interest rate is subsidized by the federal government, so it's only about 60% of the AAA rate that we get. The other 40% is subsidized, so it's a really good deal for our ratepayers. So this year's projects include the Deer Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility improvements for odor control in some of the facilities within the, within the plant that have aged beyond their service life. The North Canadian Wastewater Treatment Facility Disinfection System will be funded through this program, and then some lift station upgrades throughout the city for a total of 54, just under $54 million. So access to the fund requires approval from the Water Trust and you all, so at this point, we recommend approval of this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Browning. Thank you. All right, we can go ahead and take a motion on item M. We have a motion and a second, please vote. The item passes. Thank you. Brings us to item 9. It's a request to enter into executive session on the advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications from its attorney concerning the case of Deer Creek Water Corporation versus the City of Oklahoma City and Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. We can take a motion to move this to executive session. We have a motion and a second. And we'll move that item to executive session, which we will do after item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. All right, brings us to item O on the agenda. Claim recommended for denial, Jesus Ayelia. We have a motion and a second. Item passes. Brings us to item 11P, claims recommended for approval. We can take a motion on those. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And item P is approved as well. Brings us to item 12 on the agenda, comments from council. We'll start with Ward 8, Councilman Stonecypher.
You did that on purpose.
I did.
I mentioned today, when we were seeing the citizen survey results, that the Forbes Advisor Magazine recently concluded that Oklahoma City ranks second for affordable family vacations, and Oklahoma City also ranks in the top 20 best places to travel in the United States. And recently, Zach Craig and his department did a study of the impact of this tourism, and we, the, the, the survey or the study concluded that 23.2 million visitors came to Oklahoma City last year, and it generated a record annual economic impact of $4.3 billion. And that is impact for, for retail, for recreation, for entertainment, for lodging, for transportation and food. The reason I mention all this is I think it doesn't, it isn't said enough how great a place this is to come and visit, and I think with the holidays coming up, we need to remind our family and friends to come to Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 7, Councilwoman Nice.
Thank you. First, let me say Boomer Sooner. Thank you, thank you. It's so fun to now be a student at the university, to say that officially. Congratulations to them. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to one of our previous Ward 7 Youth Council members, Ms. Kianna Tubbs. She was recently named as a Student of the Month, so that just tells you just the great strides that our youth council members are making within our wards and within their communities and their, their sphere of influence that they have. So I just wanted to publicly congratulate her for the work that she's doing as a student. A couple of other things, I know we had a presentation about it, maybe within the last, maybe last council meeting or the meeting before, but I wanted to mention again Breast Cancer Awareness Month for this month being October, and for, for my family, it hit a little closer to home, so it means something different for our extended family and family this year, so I will say this to everyone, get your tatas checked, and that's for ladies and the fellas, because if you did not know, men have been diagnosed at great numbers for breast cancer, so please make sure fellas touch your tatas and make sure they're okay as we acknowledge the things that are happening, as well as the, the medicine that has been improving year by year to eliminate the continuing growth of breast cancer as far as the numbers. So I just wanted to make mention of that, and also wanted to say thank you to Ebenezer Baptist Church, they usually do a giveaway with, with World Vision, and this one that they did this past Saturday was a unique one because they based it on folks signing up to have medical, just checkups, and it was with the, there's a Pakistani doctors' group that, that has formed, and they are very intentional about doing nonprofit work and, and working in the community, and this is my first time to ever encounter this group, and they were doing glucose screenings, you name it, just, and people would have to check off those lists in order for them to receive some of the, some of the goods that were available, but it was a packed house, and they were giving, you know, immunizations and all of the things, so they said that they will be back in our community, so I think it's, it's very, it's great when you have all of those cultures being able to look at each other, serve one another, and, and understand that we have differences, but even those differences can make us stronger together. And my last one, as we talked about, University of Oklahoma, next Saturday is Langston University's Homecoming, so very excited to celebrate my alma mater, and also on this Saturday, there will be a free Women in Leadership Symposium at Southern Nazarene University, and I will be one of those speakers among with some other dynamic women, so if you are free and available, it is free, please come on out. I think they're trying to get an attendance of over 150 this year, and I think that's an attainable goal, to be able to support women and hear their stories, so I, I look forward to hearing the stories of the other women that will be speaking myself. And this was a very, very short meeting today, so very excited. I can still have breakfast.
Thank you. Ward 6, Councilwoman Hammond. Ward 5, Councilman Hinkle.
I just want to mention that last week, I got to attend the ribbon cutting of the aeronautical training center for the Moore Norman Technology Center, which is a huge deal for our kids who want to take advantage of the aerospace industry, which is blossoming here in Oklahoma, as well as thank the firefighters, I don't want to steal Councilman Peck's thunder, but the ribbon cutting for the fire station was outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. About the thunder, council. Ward 3, Councilwoman Peck.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, just to echo Councilwoman Nice's comments about Breast Cancer Awareness Month, my aunt, my mom, countless friends, my bonus mom, my best friend's mother have all been impacted by this, so get checked often and regularly. Last night, had the opportunity to attend a Thunder game with my spouse. We had the best time. It was an exciting game. It was a close game, it shouldn't have been, but that's all right. It's the beginning of the season, and we're very optimistic, and we had, again, just the best time, so go Thunder. And then Councilmember Hinkle did kind of steal my Thunder a little bit. We did have the ribbon cutting at Fire Station 38 in very far southwest Oklahoma City. The mayor joked that he probably needed to get a hotel to come out there and see us, and we still go five or six miles further southwest from where that fire station is, so we're very excited about the additional services to the community. We're so grateful for the city of us staying, for the support that they've provided the city for many, many years to that end, and we look forward to providing that similar support from the station for that city as well. And so we're just very grateful for our firefighters, and it's a beautiful facility, so, and I got a really cool axe bonus, so, thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Thank you. Ward 2, Councilman Cooper.
Congratulations on the axe. That's great. A different kind of axe, but ACTS axe. I'd like to invite everybody, this is the official announcement, to Tower Theater on November 1st from 5:30 to 7:45 PM. Honored to host a Ward 2 meetup focusing on homelessness. So again, that's going to be Tower Theater, and that's November 1st from 5:30 until 7:45 PM, a Ward 2 meetup on homelessness. We're going to have three parts here where we'll have two different kind of panel conversations, one focusing on our new Key to Home program and kind of the history of how we got here, and then part two being what are we doing today for tomorrow? And then something I love to do, and let me just warn everybody, this will not be a town hall format, this will actually be an informational format, where we're going to hear from people involved with the Key to Home program, from Linty Cates with the City of OKC's Homeless Services Strategy Implementa, she serves as our homelessness service strategy implementation manager, trying saying that one time fast. Cissu Youth will be here, Terry White with the, who's the Chief Executive Officer of the Mental Health Association of Oklahoma, Major Dan Stewart with OKCPD, Jenny Bass-Carl to help us think through evictions, and Assistant City Manager Aubrey McDermid. But what I really love whenever I get a chance to host meetups in Ward 2, rather than that town hall format where the one person has the one question that takes up 30 minutes of everyone's time, I really like to create a space where residents can meet with service providers or with city staff, and that's exactly what they're going to have here for the third part of the evening, where Catholic charities, for instance, City Care, Homeless Alliance, Legal Aid Services, Shelter Well, Positive Tomorrows, et cetera, will actually take up shop where residents will have the opportunity to come by and ask very specific questions of those particular service providers, whether it's the legal aid services, whether it's the eviction services, whether it's the mental health component, whether it's the youth component, you name it, we're going to make sure they're there that night. I want to emphasize one major thing about homelessness here, which is all of us are going to have to have skin in the game to, to confront this issue, all of us. That includes our neighborhood leaders, the residents in those neighborhoods, it means our districts, the commercial corridor districts, our service providers, government, and the faith community. I will say, one of the most troubling emails I have ever received was when someone said that they were driving to church on a Sunday and that they found themselves troubled by the homelessness under I-44 and Penn, and wanted to know what I was going to do about it. And my counter to that is what are we going to do about it? Where is your church? Is this not the calling of the church? And I'm ready to partner with the churches, with any place of worship, with any business, with any resident who wants to do this work. It's just all of us, it's, we got to do this together. So again, that's November 1st, 5:30 to 7:45 PM, Tower Theater. We'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Ward 1, Councilman Carter.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the Cobblestone Neighborhood, and Greg and Suzanne Grumod for hosting Neighborside Out last night and inviting Amy and I out. We had an amazing time getting to meet everyone. And to the, the Surrey Hills And to the Surrey Hills Lions Club is hosting their pancake breakfast this Saturday that I get to serve at, so I'm hoping we have a really good turnout. It's at the Surrey Hills Baptist Church, if anybody would like to join us. And on the heels of our firefighter prevention month, I've been attending the Residents' Fire Academy over the last few weeks, and it has been amazing to be able to serve along a lot of our different firefighters and learning what they get to do, and just getting to be a part of it with a number of the residents in our community. And so they're going to be opening up for applications for next year, if any of our residents would like to give that a shot. It is one of the funnest things I've done so far, being here. But I wanted to give a big shout out to Battalion Chief Donnie Bennett, Major Paul Atkins, Major Dale Kason, Major Miguel Baez, Major Raymond Luon, Major Chad Wilds, Major Greg Bradford, Captain Meredith Herman, Captain William Cooper, and of course, the RFA President Tracy McCoy, who helps put all this together. They have done an amazing job, and if you haven't done this, I recommend it highly. And of course, a huge shout out to the Thunder for winning that preseason opener, especially against San Antonio. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, brings us to item 13 on the agenda. We have one citizen signed up to speak, Mr. Michael Washington. And it appears he might have had to leave. So with that, we will recess to our executive session. Thank you. Thank you.